The order of the January eleventh, twenty twenty one, meeting of Waynesboro City Council. I've got a little script to read here. Citizens may participate in the citizen comment period by calling a number at the appropriate time. The call in number will be eight four four, eight four four, nine two zero zero. When prompted, you will enter the access code for the meeting, which is three nine, eight one, four five, followed by the number sign or the pound sign. You will hear question and answer has started. You will press star six. You will hear if you would like to be placed in as a speaker, press the number one and you'll be added. You will hear the meeting, you will hear an audio feed of the meeting while you're waiting to come in and speak into the room there. When prompted, the moderator will come on and ask you to share your council with, or your comments with council. Remember, this, this part of the process is for citizen comment period only. You're going to make comments to the council for us to take note and at another time we can get together and talk. This is not for council to give you a reply. So don't expect a reply from council when you call in. With that, we come to item number two, which is the adoption of meeting agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt our meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Mr. Our Dr. Haas Seder. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye and raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Next, item number three is to consider our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Terry. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Uh, next is matters from city mayor and from council. I have a couple of things. Last Friday, I was able to attend the EDA meeting and they did a presentation to their committee members on how they dispersed the COVID relief money for our downtown and city businesses. And I just want to thank Greg, his staff and all the member volunteers for the hard work they put into taking the money that government gave us and we presented over to them to use for our city businesses. They took that, that money, they used it wisely, they spread it out wisely and did a great job with the money. So I want to thank our EDA and for all their hard work. Now, out of that meeting, Mike and I were talking earlier and he's going to set up a presentation for the entire council so that you can see the good works of the EDA. And it'll also be open at one of our meetings for our citizens to listen to. So thank you, EDA, for a great job. Next is, I don't know if you drive around town a lot, but when you drive around, I see a lot of our city crews out working. Weather has been less than ideal and yet we still got our street crews out putting down pavement and working. These folks have worked long hours over here on two fifty four the last week or so. And I want to congratulate them because every time I drive by, they're practicing social distancing. There's, they're not grouped together, they're, they're spread out. The ones that do have to get closer together, they're wearing the proper PPE. So a great job to our city crews for fixing our roads, making them safe for us and practicing safe COVID practices while they're working. And then lastly, this, this one here, I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes on. Today, myself and I know other council members have received a number of emails from concerned citizens about a Facebook post that was put out. The chief complaint that we're receiving is one citizen said something disparaging about another citizen on Facebook. It turns out the citizen that made the disparaging comment is on one of Waynesboro's appointed committees. Council appoints these committees. I asked our legal counsel to do a little research for us today while we search the bylaws and stuff ourselves. And on behalf of Waynesboro City Council, I've asked staff and the city attorney to review relevant code sections and other guiding documents to examine the authority and criteria by which council appoints or removes individuals from various boards, commissions and committees. The council's authority and interest are focused chiefly on the individual specific performance and conduct related to their public work of a board, commission or committee. Having only been advised of this concern today, time is limited and it needs time for our council and staff to go over and consider these matters. One thing I noticed about the email and I went through and read some of the bylaws. And bylaws clearly state that the only way council can remove somebody from a committee is if they're inefficient in what they're doing for the committee by not attending meetings, if they're negligent of their duty or there's a malfeasance of office involving that individual. City council cannot control what one citizen says about another citizen on Facebook. These are clearly matters between the two citizens and in control of Facebook. So we have no concerns on that. To remove somebody from a committee would have to show the person uses their position or committee to cause harm to another citizen, which we don't see that in the emails we're receiving today. So your concerns have been heard by council. The appropriate response is being looked at within our legal authority. And as such, we're going to have to review this some more. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we're not just ignoring your emails. We've, we've read your emails. We've talked about your emails with council and it's being examined. Next, are there any other matters or concerns from council members?
I, I have some comments I'd like to pass on, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Haas.
The first is a general COVID update that I try to continue to do for citizens and folks that may be watching these things or may not be watching. On the Virginia Department of Health site, the positive cases in Waynesboro are case load. You know, those cases per day had gone up following or just around the time of Thanksgiving and have stayed up through the holidays and here into the new year. And so they are much higher than they were through the summer and the fall. There's the exciting news of the vaccine and I shared last time that, you know, that was coming. And it is now here and there are numerous folks throughout the community that due to their work, due to their exposure, have been vaccinated, at least the first vaccine. I have had my first vaccine. I'll get my second vaccine here at the end of the month. But we are still in generally one A, phase one A, which is healthcare workers and nursing home residents. My understanding is that nursing homes, they are starting to get through and if they have not gotten the first shot, they will be in the next couple of weeks. The, most of those folks will be four weeks between shots. So we've got a ways to go for until they're fully protected. Phase one B is getting going. I have not heard that we have any folks here locally that's going to be seventy five years and older. The correctional facilities, other facilities, group facilities, things like that. But hopefully that's going to be starting very soon locally. It's starting some places throughout the state. I think each health region is working on their final plans. Phase one C will be coming and that will be folks seventy five years and older, other essential workers. So that one, again, announcements will have to be made, but everybody stay tuned. The message is we're not there yet. You know, even when you get your first vaccine, the, the protection comes about two weeks after your second shot. So it's not that you get one shot and you can be cavalier about your exposures or anything else. So it's, you know, we're still got a ways to go. So continue to wear masks. I implore everyone. Continue to social distance, continue to show good choices in terms of groups getting together. I think there are a number of folks over the holidays. You know, I've heard of family gatherings that, that, you know, the majority of the family now has had COVID because of that gathering. So again, this is not the time to give up our vigilance and stay on top of this. We are getting vaccines out, but it's still a ways to go. The second matter has to do with the events in Washington DC last week. I feel I would be remiss if I did not share some thoughts because that is such an important piece of our country and what is going on right now. And we can't, we don't operate in a vacuum. The events that occurred last Wednesday were appalling. And there's no excuse, no justification for attacking the Capitol. And, and I have not heard many people trying to defend that. However, I think also those who encouraged, those who incited folks to do these activities also bear some responsibility and we have to address that. I don't have the answers. It's a tough conversation, but we have to have it in a civil manner and talk about what the ramifications are. Bringing that back closer to home, you know, I hope that we can all join together in condemning violence as the response to political differences because it has no place. And we have to come find ways to, to work together and solve problems. I know emotions run high, but we have to find ways to solve these problems rather than, than violence. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder, for your comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Anything?
If I could ask Dr. Haas Seder, on reference to the COVID, I've had some people put some questions to me and you might or might not know the answers, but one, if you've had tested positive and then you went through your, your period where you're no longer a threat, can you get it again or could you be a carrier of it even though you've had it?
You know, that is a great question. I can give you sort of our general understanding. I mean, what we, what we know and what the CDC recommends. But there are still unanswered questions. The quarantine periods after a positive test are still ten days from the test or the beginning of symptoms. And the evidence has shown that the vast majority of patients are no longer infectious at that time, as long as they are getting better. But they may still have some residual symptoms, some difficulty with sense of smell or sense of taste. But that as long as they're getting better, have not had fever, they are felt to be unlikely to be infectious. The question of getting it again is a, a difficult question because the, the answer is there has been evidence in many places of folks that have had proven cases, have recovered and then did test positive again. And it is not fully understood what that means and why in those cases, those individuals did test positive again. It does not seem to be the rule. You know, most, we are not seeing that many people are having that, but there are cases. I thought you were going to ask about the vaccine and whether folks that have been positive should get the vaccine. And the answer seems to be yes. And so the recommendations are still that even if you had tested positive at some time earlier, when your chance to get the vaccine comes up, it is still recommended to get it to further protect you. I think those were your questions, Mr. Allen. Did you have any others that I missed?
One of the other questions, if you get the vaccine, some people kind of have the feeling they can come out now and go back to life as normal and not wear the mask, but can they still be a carrier of the, of the COVID?
The, the answer is that we're not seeing a lot of carriers in the way we use that term. There are individuals that are infected and can pass the virus for a short period of time. But again, if they have a positive test, even if you have no symptoms, the, the presumption and the data suggests that by ten days you are probably no longer infectious. So they're not a carrier, meaning passing it on months or months later. In terms of getting the infection, the, the thing I mentioned earlier is that full protection occurs about two weeks after the second dose of the vaccine. So one vaccine or even just walking out of the clinic saying, I got my second one, does not infer full protection. And you've heard the numbers valid around ninety four to ninety five percent effective, meaning that about five percent of folks will not amount a response. And we do not know which five percent that will be. So, so the answer, I think, you know, you made the point, you can't come out and say, well, I'm protected now. I don't have to worry about anything. You know, what's going to dictate that, and again, I'm not a public health expert, but look for this, is going to be infection rates. And when we get to the point where the infection rates are low enough that the Department of Health and the CDC say now it is safe to, to, you know, lower the restrictions, now it is safe to step away from the mask. Now it is safe to do some of the things that we've been missing. That's what's going to dictate it, not saying, I got my vaccine, so I can go do what I want. Because there is still that chance that you will get infected and that you can pass it on to others, which keeps it going. And that's what we're trying to stop.
See, I'm afraid we'll have a lot of confusion because once people get vaccinated, they'll say, well, I'm no longer a threat. I don't need the mask. I can go out. The people that are out still trying to protect themselves, wearing a mask, they don't know whether they've been vaccinated or not. They'll start saying, well, that person has no responsibility for us. It could turn into a real cluster. So thank you for those answers.
Yeah. And, and I, I think you're right. And I think hopefully the messaging that will continue to come out is we're not there yet. Stay, you know, stay the course because we got to work through this.
And then the second thing, I'd like to respond to Dr. Haas Seder's comments about the attack on the Capitol. I agree with him totally. I believe in free speech and I believe in the right to protest, but I think it needs to be peaceful protest. And as we've seen over the last couple of years, we've had major, major protests that were not peaceful. That tore cities up, tore businesses up, killed people. And before we jump on the wagon and say that this attack or protest at the Capitol was the worst thing that's happened. It wasn't good. It definitely, to my opinion, was not the worst. And I think that and I hope that our authorities with the cameras and pictures and whatever that information they have will go after the people that actually violated the law. The people that went there to protest and show their support for the president, that's one thing. The people that went there to cause destruction and break the law, I think they should be punished to the maximum penalty that they can be. And once again, the only thing we're going to do in this country, if we don't learn to get along with each other and work together, then we're all in trouble.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would offer an observation too, just to, I think, triple down, if you will, on, on those comments. I think that there's, there is an enormous power and an enormous responsibility in the truth. And, you know, our, whether it's at the local level, state level or national level, our nation is stronger when we operate and we can ground our disagreements in the truth. So it's incredibly important that I think we all play, whether you're a leader, an elected official or an advocate, that we continue to operate in the truth. I've been following, if you will, and participating in a couple of sessions with an organization that's, that's across the nation, actually. They've grown, started out of a couple of different hubs and have grown. And I'll share it on my Facebook page for those that might be interested. It's an organization called Braver Angels. Made up of folks that are on the absolute polar opposites of ideologies and political spectrums. But they get together to have regular conversations, subgroups, sub panels. And I'd encourage folks to, to explore that or, or even to talk locally. They have an event tomorrow evening at eight PM and I'll share that. Certainly the, the topic of last week will be prevalent in, in the, in the agenda for tomorrow evening. But it's, it's important that people stay involved, be educated and be compassionate. So thank you.
Anyone else? I appreciate all your, your comments tonight. They were very insightful. Thank you very much. And I think it's a help for our community to hear that type of thing. Let's move on to item number six. Item number six is to proclaim February as Black History Month in Waynesboro and to provide a proclamation of such to Miss Alistair Randolph of the Black History Museum. Mr. Hamp, would you like to give us some details on this?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to, Mr. Mayor. May be helpful for the council and the community to be aware that since nineteen seventy six, every US president has proclaimed February as Black History Month. The origins of Black History Month date back to nineteen fifteen, when Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson founded the Association for the Study of African American Life and History and later in nineteen twenty six, launched Negro History Month. The theme of this year's celebration is the black family, representation, identity and diversity. That theme reflects changes in how people of African descent in the United States view themselves, influence social movements on racial ideologies and encourage aspirations of the black community. The proclamation further urges all citizens to join in celebrating the accomplishments of African Americans during Black History Month and encourages the people of Waynesboro to recognize the many talents, achievements and contributions that African Americans have made to their communities.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Do we have a motion to proclaim February as Black History Month in the city of Waynesboro?
I'll make that motion.
I would gladly make that motion.
All right. All right. Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder. Thank you, Terry, for the second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye and a show of hands. Aye. All right. This motion carries five oh. Therefore, be it resolved, the mayor of Waynesboro on behalf of the Waynesboro City Council takes pleasure in recognizing February twenty twenty one as Black History Month and urges all citizens to join in the celebration, celebrating the accomplishments of African Americans during Black History Month and encourage the people of Waynesboro to recognize the many talents, achievements and contributions of African Americans that they make to our community. Thank you all very much. Next is going to be to receive a information regarding coronavirus relief fund for utility customers facing economic hardship caused by the pandemic and information regarding Governor Northern's moratorium on utility disconnect. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. On this evening, we'd like to discuss two separate but related issues regarding the Commonwealth's response to coronavirus as it impacts customers of private and public utilities. One is House Bill five oh oh five, which was passed in the late fall special session of the General Assembly. And as well, the COVID nineteen municipal utility relief program. So to say, there's really two separate but related issues and we'll start with House Bill five oh oh five, which is essentially, and then we'll talk as well about the COVID nineteen municipal relief program. But for House Bill five zero zero five, it basically places a moratorium on utility disconnections for non-payment. It requires that localities or utility providers generally develop repayment plans for eligible customers who struggle to pay their utility bills. And then also provides a method by which utility providers may seek relief from the moratorium. The COVID nineteen municipal utility relief program are funds that were provided by coronavirus relief funds. That's, they're derived from the CARES Act, which council's familiar with. The city Waynesboro staff applied for and received just over three hundred thousand dollars in these funds. These funds are to be used for utility assistance for eligible customers as customers who have suffered an economic hardship during the pandemic. And these are meant to be a one-time benefit for customers. They also don't allow for dual benefit and that simply means that if you've received CARES fund to pay prior bill, you couldn't use these funds to pay that same bill. We'll go into a little more detail on the House bill. The moratorium on utility disconnects, and this actually applies to both those utilities that are governed by the, regulated by the SCC State Corporation Commission. That includes the power company and the gas companies and those that are not. And those include generally municipal utility providers like the city of Waynesboro. And the moratorium is meant to last until the governor determines that the economic and public health conditions have improved sufficiently to lift the moratorium or until at least sixty days after the current declared state of emergency ends. It also requires that utility providers notify customers who are at least thirty days in arrears of their, on their accounts of this disconnection moratorium and that we develop a repayment plan for customers who are in arrears and that we notify them of those, those options. And then finally, and we'll talk about this again in a little more detail in a moment, there is provision for utility providers to seek relief from the disconnection moratorium. So in other words, there, you'll, you'll see as we go through this, there are mechanisms in place through these two systems, the utility relief paint program and the House bill to provide assistance to folks who have had a COVID-related economic hardship. But it would allow, if you seek relief from the moratorium, that you could still disconnect a customer who's simply not paying their bill, but can't demonstrate hardship. The repayment plan is described by the House bill, and I'll hit a few of the high points. One is that we're required to notify customers who are at least 30 days in arrears of the available payment plan. And in fact, we have done that. We had our first round of late notices that went out with notification to customers of both the availability of a repayment plan that would begin this month, January, as well as the availability of, of special funds to potentially assist those customers. We're also required to allow that whatever the amount owed can be amortized over a period of not less than six months and as much as 24 months. And the code basically says that we're to work with the customer to come up with a payment plan that is affordable to them. We may require that the customer attest to the fact that they have experienced a financial hardship resulting from or during the public health emergency. And that hardship could be a loss of job, that the business they work for shut down. It could be that they've had COVID disruption in their own household, that they were quarantined and lost work, or that they were ill, lost work, or that they've had a childcare problem, or that they left a job because of their own medical conditions, or that they didn't feel like their workplace was a safe environment for them. So it's, there, there is a fair amount of latitude that's granted to the customer to demonstrate that hardship, and that it is, again, a self-certification of the hardship. Also, the repayment plan requires that we, we cannot require a deposit to get on the payment plan. You can still require deposits to sign up for utilities, but not to get on the payment plan. We can't charge penalty, interest, or other fees, you know, for being on the payment plan or during the payment plan. And that we can't consider somebody's past history of, of payment when signing up for the plan. So at this point, you know, as, as well, that even if you seek relief from the moratorium, you have to offer repayment plan during this period of time. We've, again, we're, we have, we're prepared to, to offer payment plans. I'll get into a second, as a practical matter. Anybody who was eligible for a payment plan through the notices that we sent was also eligible to receive funds, you know, to basically pay their bills. So, so no one went on a payment plan through the last round of late notices. In order to seek relief from the moratorium, the utility that's not subject to SCC regulation, which includes the city of Waynesboro, would have to demonstrate that we have arrears, late accounts that exceed 1% of the utility's operating budget. And we would be eligible under that criteria. In other, in, in order to seek that, that relief, that one, we have to, to prepare written analysis demonstrating our eligibility, and then make those working papers available to the public for inspection. And then the governing body, you as a council, would claim relief by, one, providing public notice that you are, you intend to do so. Take public comment, which we would do in a public hearing, and again, make working papers available to the public through that comment period. And then finally, that you would certify or approve our exceedance. And it would be our intention to state, set such a public hearing for the January 25th meeting of the council, unless you direct us to do otherwise. Relative to the COVID-19 municipal relief program, which, again, are funds that are, originate from the CARES Act. As I mentioned, that city of Waynesboro has already applied for and received $360,000, $306,000 that we can apply to, to utility bills for customers experiencing economic hardship due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And it would demonstrate hardship, much as I described in the, the previous section about repayment plan. Again, it's a process of self attestation that the, the customer certifies that they've had a specific type of hardship. And that these, that when we received initial notices, these were for arrears that had accumulated from March of 2020 through basically December. And that with arrears, there's, there's a bit to, you know, work through in terms of when you receive a bill, and then when is that bill 30 days in arrears? And if I'm to be candid, there, this and other matters in, you know, either the House bill or in the relief program that aren't entirely explicit. And I think that a lot of utility providers are trying to work through now the administrative processes based on the guidance given. And as we found with a lot of things related to CARES funds, there are frequently asked question, flowers are being produced, and, and we, we hope to continue to seek some guidance. But when we, again, what this means is when we originally received this, this funding, it was really gonna be just to catch people up in sort of a one-time shot. It wasn't a, to, to be an ongoing program. Now, we have received notice that they've extended the program through January. So that would apply to bills that are going out in, in December. We don't know if there will be further extensions. But I, I would simply remind the council that part of, we, we didn't have a lot of arrears, and part of that was because of the money that the council appropriated to Department of Social Services for the Waynesboro CARES program, which provided money to help folks with utilities and rent and so forth. So it, it helped catch up our arrears, really, by the time this money became available. As I mentioned, this is meant to be a one-time benefit, and there can be no dual benefit under, with other CARES programs. So, but basically what that means, it is if you receive previous CARES money to pay for a specific bill, you can't be reimbursed for that bill twice. So in the, the notices that were sent, we, we sent late notices in, that were for bills that really were sent in November, but became in arrears in, in December. We received 50 applications for folks in arrears, and we provided a bit more than $10,000 in relief. Now, without getting into too much detail, about 8,800 of those dollars came from this COVID-19 municipal relief program, and the other was covered from other CARES fund, mostly because, one, we, we can't pay for refuse collection out of these proceeds, but we can with other CARES money. And then we can't cover things like late penalties and so forth that would have been on those bills with these funds, but we can with other CARES money. So about 50 applications and a bit more than $10,000 in, in arrears were cleared. Now, if I'm to put that in perspective, in the, in a billing cycle, in the billing cycle where we sent these notices, and we sent individual notices in the bills, in the late bills, to all customers who were late of the availability of these programs. But they, in that billing cycle, we sent more than 1,100 late notices. And the arrears amongst all accounts in that, in those late notices was more than $180,000. So I think the point being that a fairly small percentage of folks either were eligible or took advantage of the program funds, and, and that's okay. We, we would rather know that folks are on solid ground and able to pay their bills than not, obviously. And then finally, as I mentioned before, that this does originate from the, the CARES funds. And so we follow the same treasury guidance as we've discussed in previous meetings with the council. I mentioned the, the, the public assistance funds that the council appropriated for, that we actually worked with the Department of Social Service to distribute. And as you may recall, council appropriated $150,000 in CARES fund to be used for things like utility bills and rent and mortgage and so forth. About $115,000 was distributed to eligible individuals, households in the community. A little more than half of that money was spent on electric bills. About a third of the money went to water and sewer bills, about $33,000. And about $17,000, or 15% of the total funds, were spent on rent. And then a smaller percentage, about 5%, was spent on natural gas utilities. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm glad to take questions from the council. And, and as I say, it is our intention, unless directed otherwise, to set a public hearing for city council and provide public notice of the hearing to seek relief from the moratorium of, for disconnections.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Shaw?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Not really. Well, it is a question to Mr. Shaw in our discussion earlier. You know, when, when you say these people get relief, and we won't do cutoffs, and we won't do penalties. I think it's a common knowledge in the court systems, when they shut down, and they wasn't doing garnishments and evictions and things of that sort, that applied to everyone. What we're talking about here does not apply to everyone, does it, Mr. Shaw? It only applies to the people that are in this program here. So if, if my next door neighbor or someone would say, well, if I'm a day late or whatever on my bill, I won't be penalized because they're not collecting late fees or doing cutoff notices.
That is, we sit here today, we're not doing cutoffs. We are, if, and we would charge a late fee if you're not eligible under the program. But if the council provides relief for the moratorium, then your, if your neighbor wasn't eligible under the guidelines of either of these programs, then they would be subject to collection, just like, you know, we're, we do today.
Business is normal, but I think some people are getting confused that they think they get a free ride when they, they see and hear things of, you know, discussions like this.
Well, it wouldn't be certainly my interpretation, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that actually Mr. McCormick and Ms. Michelson have done the lion's share of the work in terms of, of making sure that we understand and comply with the regulations. So I'd be glad if either of them want to jump in. But it would not be my interpretation that if you seek relief from the moratorium, and somebody is not eligible based on, you know, a demonstrated hardship, then no, they're subject to collection of utility bills, you know, as, as normal.
Well, the example I give you today was somebody had mailed their bill, you know, to get in a duly time to the treasurer. And because of the backup in the postal services and holidays, COVID, whatever, the treasurer has told me that they're getting payments that were mailed back in November that are just coming in today. So these are, any of us could be that person that thought we mailed it in a timely fashion. And now it's coming in a month late, no fault of our own, but through our postal service. And then we get the, the late penalty, and there's confusion because they say, well, we don't really have to pay that because I heard that's been suspended. So that's why I was asking the question.
Right. Not, not the case. Now, I certainly couldn't speak for the treasurer and collections. She, she, of course, collects according to a standard of law. I would say, anecdotally, there've been some articles in, in newspapers and so forth recently about how far behind the post office, postal delivery service felt prior to Christmas and things like that. So I've heard similar stories about how long it takes for, you know, if, if they get backed up delivering packages, then it also backs up your parcel post.
Well, I, I had asked the treasurer because I was under the assumption that if your postmark was within reason, then they would accept that. But she said that according to state code, that is only entitled to when you're paying taxes. But when you're paying utilities, that does not come to be the, the issue. And so technically, you are late, even though it was mailed a month ago. So if any of y'all other people get complaints or concerns about this, you might be aware of it.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question too for Mr. Shaw. The, I was making some notes, and you talked about seeking relief from the moratorium as a, as an entity, as a city. And what I heard you say was that if we, if our, our, was it the, the monetary arrears? Or was it the number of, of accounts that exceed 1%?
No, it's the, the total arrears of, of all accounts that, so, which is something that, that we track as a matter of course. We'd like to know how much money is outstanding that people owe us. But it's the total arrears of all of those accounts.
Versus the annual receipts or the monthly receipts, what's our?
Annual operating budget of the utility.
And so the question then, that, that I didn't hear an answer to, but I might not have been paying attention at that moment, is where are we? Are we at 1%? Are we at more than 1% or less than 1%?
We'd be at more than 1%. I don't have the number at hand, but we'll, we'll have working papers available this week. And I think it would demonstrate that we're, we're, I don't want to misspeak, but I think we're well over 1%. Maybe as, as high as 3% and 4% is more typical for us.
Okay. And, and so the relief that, that we would be considering would be relief from the moratorium for folks that are not affected by COVID?
Correct. We could, that we could, right now, we cannot disconnect anyone for non-payment. And this would allow us to resume disconnections for non-payment, unless the person, you know, applies for and, and is granted relief because of the hardship. And I, I see Ms. Michelson shaking her head.
It's important to distinguish between the moratorium on the disconnection and the repayment plan. They're in the same House bill, but they're two separate sections. So a lot of times, people talk about them as if, you know, they're connected or they're interrelated. In the big picture, they may be, but if the city exempts itself from the moratorium, that's saying it can disconnect people for failure to make payments. If they get on a repayment plan, they can be current, then they will be current. So they wouldn't be in default, and therefore, they wouldn't be subject to disconnection. But it's how they define the repayment plan. So it's a little bit, we just want to be precise of our thinking and, and talking about this. So if somebody falls off a repayment plan, say they get on it, and they don't, they fail to make their repayment plan payments, then they could be still then subject to the moratorium if the city exempts, you know, exempts itself from the, the disconnection moratorium.
So this, this repayment plan, is that only for folks that were negatively affected by COVID? Or is that for anybody that didn't pay their bill at that time?
Well, as, as Mr. Shaw indicated, it's a self-attestation to say that you have experienced financial hardships caused by or during COVID. So it's a very broad definition of economic hardship. Somebody could have an economic hardship that's not necessarily directly related to COVID. But just say they got laid off or they're fired. It wasn't really, had nothing to do necessarily with COVID, but they may not be able to find another job. It's during COVID. So it's a really broad. job. It's during COVID. So it's a really broad definition of, you know, economic hardship. And 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 really, we can't ask a lot of questions. They just have to self attest that, yes, I've experienced this financial hardship. And that's all we can ask, really.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Shaw? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time and your your work there.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item number eight. Item number eight is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager and or mayor to receive real property interest on behalf of the city in calendar year 2021. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. Pardon me. The council's been asked to adopt a resolution of this nature annually for some years now, and it's intended to facilitate work and speed up work related to utility repair or road repair and construction whereby it's necessary for the city to acquire additional right of way or easement from private property owners. It is not intended to facilitate the receipt or acquisition of larger tract of larger tracts of property more conspicuous in nature. In in that regard, I think in the past, the manager has demonstrated a complete willingness in in bringing forward those exceptional and large considerations. In prepping the council for this item, I did receive a request from a council member to make sure that communication was in place so that if the council, or excuse me, if the manager or the mayor did in fact exercise the authority under this resolution, acquired a right of way or easement or piece of property, then they would appreciate the council being alerted to as much.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hamp? All right. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye and a show of hands. Aye. Motion carries five oh. Any opposed? All five of us hit our hand up. So motion carries five oh. The next item up is item number nine to consider introducing an order and ordinance. No, consider introducing it and adopting an ordinance appropriating two thousand dollars in fund grants provided by Central Blue Ridge Community Foundation for the purpose of laptop for the purchase of laptops and other devices for Waynesboro Public Libraries. Mr. Hamp? Mr. Hamp?
Looks like he's frozen.
Mr. Shaw, you want to help him out?
Sure. I think this is fairly straightforward. It's a grant that's that's been received by the library and they will, as it's written, I don't think there's much to describe. They're going to purchase some laptops and equipment as the grantor expected. So you can do this with a single reading because we're receiving funds.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And it was my understanding today meeting with Mr. Mr. Hamp, that the this will be the library's laptops and they may have a policy or procedure in place if somebody needs to check out a laptop similar to a book, they can check it out for a period of time and return it like a regular library property that they check out.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Shaw? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance appropriating two thousand dollars in this grant?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, show your hands and say aye. Any opposed? This motion carries five oh. Thank you all. All right. Now we have communications, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp is gone, so Jim, you're on deck.
Mr. Mayor, I would just remind the council that we have the first council budget work session on January the twenty seventh at six o'clock, six P M.
Six P M. Thank you, sir. Welcome back, Mr. Hamp. Mike, you can, there you go.
Have you taken, has Jim helped us through everything at this point?
Yes, sir. He stepped in and did your job or other.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
All right. The the next next we have up is our citizen comment period. Let me scroll back up and get these numbers. We're going to open the the phone line for our citizen comment period. If you want to participate in this, you can call the phone number that is on your nice work, guys, is on screen, eight four four eight four four nine two zero zero. When prompted, you're going to enter the code three eight, three nine eight one four followed by the pound sign. Here, question and answers has started. Press the star six at that time. If you want to speak, you'll be asked to press the number one. After you press the number one, you'll still hear an audio feed of the meeting. You'll hear a moderator come on when it's your turn to speak. Remember, this is your time to share with council. You will not get a reply from council members tonight. Simply your time to share with us your your concerns, and we can set up an appointment to meet at another time if you want to talk to a council member one on one.
Mr. Mayor, I think you said three nine eight one four. The the printout says three one eight nine or eight one four five. I don't know which is correct.
If I said that, I I I said it wrong. It's three nine eight one four five followed by the pound sign. That is the correct number.
Mr. Mayor, while while we're waiting for folks to join us, I would just ask Ms. Bordle if she's listening in to to perhaps send us all meeting invitations for the upcoming budget work sessions.
Okay, thank you.
populate that on our calendars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. McCormick, do we have anybody waiting?
Yes, sir. We currently have two people that are in the waiting room, but I've not opened the question and answer yet. So they may just be listening to the meeting. So I'm going to unmute the extra laptop and open the question and answer. So if anybody that's on the other end wants to speak, they will have to follow the prompts, and they should be able to hear them in just a moment.
Q and A session has started.
And I believe anyone in the waiting room, it looks like we do have one that's moved into a pending question. Anyone in the waiting room that would like to speak will need to press one, and all three have moved into the waiting room. So I'm going to start for the next question. I think it's going to be Mr. Dwight Williams first, then Mr. Herman Wells, and then Ms. Tiffany Hewitt is what it looks like is the order on my screen. So let's see if this works. Mr. Williams, you should be able to speak now if you'd like.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, hey, Mr. Mr. Williams?
Counsel, my name is Dwight Williams of twenty eighteen Jefferson Lane. I address you tonight over the phone on the subject of some reprehensible behavior of an appointed city commission member against a respected member of our community. And while I recognize the mayor's comments at the beginning of the meeting, I still believe the dispute of this nature must be addressed by city council. Shortly after the events transpired in D C on January sixth, Ms. Jennifer Lewis of Waynesboro over social media publicly attacked and defamed the respected resident of our community for having participated in the rally in D C. I will not publicly mention the respected resident's name so as not to cause any more pain and suffering than they have already endured so far, and to avoid any further retaliatory measures from being directed towards them or the family. Lewis's Facebook post says that the respected resident participated in a quote unquote revolution. There was no revolution, and the resident did no such thing. Her post says that the respected resident is a local photographer, and it also includes a screenshot of the resident's business page. While that part is true, it has absolutely no bearing on the respected resident participating in the D C rally. And it can be reasonably inferred that it was included to hurt the resident's local business opportunities. Another post of hers shows that she incited her supporters to conduct self described acts of retribution, such as actively calling for the imprisonment of the respected resident and reporting the resident to the F B I. I find it absolutely appalling for a resident to attack another here in Waynesboro, especially when the attack is public, it's false accusations, and is done to intentionally harm someone. This in no way brings a community together. And for someone who holds an appointed position on a city commission, there is a higher standard that needs to be followed. Lewis's action does not paint Waynesboro in a good light as she's alleging false information against a conservative who has done absolutely nothing wrong, except to exercise her First Amendment right to peacefully assemble and to show some love for her president. Liberals like Lewis continually to espouse their First Amendment rights, yet they are the first to try to quash the same set of rights of a conservative. This is a double standard that has no place in our community. This defamation has the high potential to negatively affect the respected resident's job, the ability for that person to make an income, and tarnishes that resident's good name and that of their family. Additionally, the respected resident attested to me personally that they have never even met Jennifer Lewis, which then logically suggests that Lewis is attacking conservatives and others who do not agree with her politically. Defamation and political insensitivity is unbecoming of someone who is a leader in the community. That said, I call for the immediate resignation and removal of Jennifer Lewis from any and all Waynesboro City Council appointed capacities in our city. And if she cannot be removed per the bylaws as mentioned earlier, then I ask that a mechanism be developed to be put in place to remove appointees who do not represent the city appropriately in their public life. Furthermore, I call it for the council members to publicly denounce acts like what has been done to the respected resident of our community. That's all I have for you this evening, but I thank you all for your time and consideration and for listening to the letters and the emails and the comments from your residents. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your comments and concerns tonight. Mr. Mr. Wells, are you in the room and ready to speak?
This is Mr. Wells. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you. I heard your comments in the beginning. I just want to put this on record. My name is Herman Wells. I live on Magnolia Avenue in Waynesboro. I'm a member of the Waynesboro Republican Committee. I want to speak this evening with regard to an event that took place on social media on or about ten January twenty twenty one. A member of the Waynesboro Cultural Commission, Ms. Jennifer Lewis, publicly attacked a member of the Waynesboro Republican Committee, accusing the individual of participating in revolution type activities in Washington, D C on sixth January twenty twenty one. In order to protect the name of the individual slandered on social media, I sent an email with a formal and more concise signed letter from me and a copy of the offending post to your official email address at the beginning of this of this meeting. You may be asking yourself right now, why is Herman bringing this in front of the city council? This is clearly a private matter. Well, I'm bringing it before you for two reasons. One, Ms. Lewis is a member of the Waynesboro Cultural Commission. Two, Ms. Lewis's rhetoric, though not taking place in an official capacity as a member of the cultural commission, is divisive and could at some point affect her ability to conduct affairs on the commission. To remind the council, the cultural commission coordinates the promotion and support of existing cultural activities. Culture can be defined as the intangible shared beliefs, values, and practices of a group, large community, or a nation. The Collins Dictionary defines cultural as means relating to a particular society and its ideas, customs, and art, and activity as something that you spend time doing. This is exactly what the individual concerned was doing. Our right to free speech and assembly encompasses a wide scope of protest activities ranging from flag burning to picketing. Participating in political activities to include demonstrations to advocate for change is part of our American culture. A member of the cultural commission should understand this basic tenet. To illustrate my point, in August of twenty twenty, our future vice president, Ms. Harris, stated, I learned that the greatest movements that we have seen in recent history in our country and probably since the beginning have been born out of protest, have been born out of understanding the power of the people to take to the streets and force their government to address what is wrong. The inequities, the inequalities, the unfairness, but also the conscience of a government is its people, to force the government to be true to the ideals that we say we hold dear. As a member of the historical commission, I am very aware that all members of the team have different ideas and ways of viewing life. In our commission handbook, it reads, keep an open mind, strive to appreciate differences in approach and point of view. Diversity of ideas sustains a thoughtful dialogue and a vibrant community. Again, she did not make this comment in an official capacity, but do her comments sound like she can appreciate different points of view? If she cannot appreciate different points of view in her private life, can the residents of this town trust her to appreciate their points of view while serving on the cultural commission? If Ms. Lewis observed the individual concern participating in a legal activity, she has a responsibility to report the incident to our local police. Protesters and activists who advocate for change through acts of civil disobedience or deliberate disregard of laws should be held accountable and prosecuted. This is a serious matter. A deadly serious incident took place at our nation's capital. This is not the time to make nefarious claims of unlawful activity or conduct child's play via social media. Our nation's capital was attacked. I ask you, I ask you to consider through appropriate investigative means if Ms. Lewis is fit to continue service on the Waynesboro Cultural Commission. And regardless of your outcome, sir, I stand by that. I stand with the committee on on their final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, for your comments. Ms. Tiffany Hunt, are you in the room?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Craig Scott. I live at sixteen sixteen Harmsden Road in beautiful Waynesboro. I'm lucky to be here. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and committee, for your time, patience, and understanding. I also want to reiterate what two previous callers said, but I just want to add a few more small points. Our law enforcement is stretched. The resources are always inadequate. This, in my opinion, and I think you would probably concur, is a spurious attack on this party and wasting resources for overly oppressed F B I under the current circumstances which you folks have well addressed earlier in the meeting as an example. That's all. I think it's in intimidation, there's no excuse for intimidation. And I'll just leave it at that. I don't want to, you know, overstay my welcome. But thank you for your time and kindness.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for your comments tonight. Mr. McCormick, do we have anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll close the the public hearing and brings us to our last order of business. Let me get to the bottom of the page here. We'll close the citizen comment period. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have a second? Thank you, Sam. Is there any discussion? Everybody unmute your your mics, and I'm going to ask for a roll call or a vote. Raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is now adjourned.